I'd like to call the Tuesday, July 18th, 2023 Papillion City Council Meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Fanslaw. Kluk. Stube. Engberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We've got one presentation tonight with the youth council. Welcome. If you want to come up, and I think you guys have had a leadership change, too. As they're coming up, people are not aware, we've got a mayor's youth council, a lot of young adults involved in it. They can get involved in late junior high, I think about the eighth grade, and then stay on it through senior high. It's got a couple of levels, so they grow in their leadership. They basically run it as a city council meeting, and they're coming up with their own agendas, their own ideas, vetting them through the group, debating them, coming to consensus, and run it just like it, and do a lot of great community things. So, welcome.
Hello, I am Kira Montiel. Thank you for having us. So, we are just going to go over some events that the council has participated and supported. So, in February, upper council member Christine Holder chaired our first Black History Month celebration. Our community came together and enjoyed games, dinner, and a variety of speakers. We look forward to this event again. So, in spring, we helped out with the Easter egg hunt. The youth council has been helping out with this event for over 15 years. The members had stations and handed out eggs to children. There are, there was a good turnout, and the event ran very smooth. In late April, pollinator, we had a pollinator garden replant, and we reseeded perennials, pole weeds, and we also installed a sign that the council would like to thank Tony Gowan for. We were, and we're excited to see the garden flourish over time. And if you have a chance, please drive by, it is located in Halleck Park. In May, we had some council members attend the Nation of Patriots farewell. We were privileged to participate in the flag ceremony, and we're pleased to see our community support our veterans. Also in May, some council members helped pack over 80,000 meals for the local community, and that was located at Wildwood Church.
Hello, my name is Jenna. And so, in, also in May, we did the Papillion Race Series, which was where we just handed out water to the runners. We had a couple of stations there. And then recently, in June, we had Papillion Days, where we had our Papillion Days booth, which was the ring toss. And then we also participated in the Papillion Day Parade, where we drove gators and passed out candy.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for everything you do. Counsel, have any questions? Thank you for everything. Appreciate it. Ms. Powers, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you. And I just want to echo what Mayor Black said, thank you for everything you guys do. You're quite the gem in the community, and we love seeing future leaders at work. So, for my report, hopefully you've heard by now about the street renaming ceremony being held this Friday, July 21st, at 10:00 a.m. at the Landing Softball Field Complex. We are excited to honor Papillion's own softball legends, Peaches James Keaton and Jordy Ball, by ceremonially naming the interior streets. The interior east-west softball road will be renamed Peaches James Way, and the north-south road will be Jordan Ball Boulevard. And this is just one small way for the city to recognize these two incredible women and the legacy they have left for future generations of little girls. And the event is being held in conjunction with the 2023 USA Softball Class B 18 Under Northern National Tournament, which is a mouthful, but which is also an event being hosted by Sarpy County Tourism, and it's in partnership with the city. So, if you have a chance, please join us, we're really excited. And as a follow-up to an April Public Facilities Committee meeting, the digital library space at the Landing will be changing in the next couple of weeks. The makers' space equipment currently located in the digital library will be moving to the classroom directly behind it, and that will become a dedicated makers' space. And having this room will provide for additional space for the public to work on projects, which will include the addition of a new large-format printer. And this change will also allow for extended times in the computer lab, in the study space, outside of the library's normal hours, and you'll see those open more frequently and more available to the citizens. And then just a reminder that there's a month left for the current season of the Papillion Farmers Market. The final market will be held on August 16th, and the weekly markets are every Wednesday from 5:00, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at City Park. So, if you haven't had a chance, check it out, a lot of great produce and local vendors. And then just finally, that there's going to be a Public Safety Committee meeting prior to the next council meeting on August 1st. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Seconded by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
16-0-ase.
Motion passes. Next is Item E1. The next two items are related. Item E1, Ordinance 2002, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to CC Community Commercial, and R4 PUD2, multifamily residential, with a specific planned unit over, development overlay for the property legally described as attractive land located in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 36, Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South 66th Street and Shram Road, the applicant to Spruce Capital Group LLC, the Thai Farm. It's a public hearing, I'll open it. I'll note for the council, you should have a letter at your desk that was sent in as opposition. I think it's noted for, yeah, it's noted for this item, so I'll make sure you've got that. Proponents, welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant Spruce Capital. With me tonight is Cal Hasi of VNA Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. With your permission, I'll probably kind of use the, talk about the plat and the zoning sort of interchangeably, because they're both public hearings, I think it's just easier to get.
And a good note for anybody that's speaking, anything done in this public hearing, I'll carry over also to the other one, so takes care of some due precautions.
Perfect, thank you. So, with that, you're probably all fairly familiar with this particular property. This is just showing the aerial photograph. Highway 370 runs along the north, proposed 66th Street runs along the east. Of course, 66th Street is currently not constructed, the right-of-way is not dedicated either. And then, of course, you have Shram Road to the south, a portion of Shram Road is dedicated with 72 Place, and then the balance of Shram Road will be dedicated and constructed with this particular project. Also, 66th Street will be constructed with this particular project, which is important to note, because everything to the south will end up having to make their way or its way to Highway 370, and of course, the full movement interchange or intersection at 66th and Highway 370. So, with that, I kind of wanted to talk about the existing conditions. This is a really difficult site. This, again, shows Highway 370 on the north, 66th Street on the east, Shram Road, of course, on the south. And what you'll notice here is that there's a 100-foot wide OPBD easement that runs diagonally from the northeast to the southwest, and then you have a drainageway that runs right through the middle of the property. And then you have some pretty significant grade change on this property. So, from the drainageway, it goes 50 feet up to the property line to the west. East of the drainageway, it goes 30 feet up to proposed 66th Street. And then overall, it drops about 30 feet in grade change from the northeast to the southwest. So, this is a really challenging piece of property with a number of constraints that you just have to live with and work around. We have been in the planning process with the city staff for probably close to a year, I'm guessing. I think we went to Planning Board sometime last fall, late last fall. And so, we've been working continuously since that time to really develop some unique product types that we think fit nicely with not only the comp plan, but with the physical constraints of this particular property. So, with that, of course, we're seeking the approval of the preliminary plat, and then, of course, just a public hearing on the rezoning. So, what I wanted to get into then is the particulars about the site plan itself. And I wanted to point out that your comp plan calls for this particular property to be high-density, and that's really what's being proposed here. And this is what we all refer to as the missing middle. I think we've been down here a number of times on a number of different projects, and this seems to be what the City of Papillion maybe needs and is missing more than anything, no pun intended on the missing middle. But, but this is several different housing types that you'll see with respect to this property. The preliminary plat, you'll notice, really divides the property into four distinct lots, separated by what's going to be Town Center Drive here in the middle. And so, I'll just, I'll kind of go around, and I'm not going to elaborate too much on parking, but, but all of this has been discussed pretty extensively with the planning staff, and we think we meet all the requirements of the zoning. But, there's what they're referring to as Direct Access A, that's these units back here, and there's 32 of those. There's 48 parking stalls, there's 16 garages, 32 surface parking stalls. Then when they say direct access, and I have some pictures that I'll share with you in a little bit, what they mean by that is that you're not going through a common hallway or a common corridor, you actually have a front door and a back door, and you actually enter the unit directly from the outside. So, that is 32 located here. Then you have your traditional multifamily units, there's four buildings here, and there's 208 units here. It's four stories with an underground parking garage on those four buildings. Again, 200 apartment units in the red up here with 349 parking spaces, 293 surface spaces, and 56 garage spaces. So, that relates to that. Now, what I wanted to talk about, I'll kind of keep them north and south, because it's kind of easier to understand and handle that way, but there is a club and a swimming pool, and with all the various amenities that you typically have with this kind of a multifamily project, there's open space up in this area here, as shown. There's a little bit of a park shown here in this location. So, those are the amenities that are north of Town Center Drive, although all the amenities can be used by all of the various units within the proposed development. So then, when you go south of Town Center Drive here, you have cottages, and these cottages, this arrow goes over to here, and it's showing these in this location here in yellow. There's 74 cottage homes, and there's 143 parking spaces, 119 surface, and 24 garages. And again, that's the yellow in here. This also has a club with a swimming pool, with all the various amenities in the clubhouse that you typically see with a housing project of this type. In addition, then, we have what we're calling the Direct Access B units, and that, those are these units located here. Again, very similar to here, they're just larger in size. And those direct access units, there's 30 being called for here with 68 parking stalls, 38 surface stalls, and 30 garage stalls, and that's these in this location here. You have a park shown here, and then, of course, you have the detention basin that runs along the detention area, right through the middle of the property, as we discussed. And here, you can see the 100-foot OPBD easement that runs diagonally through the site, which, again, makes it very difficult to find a balance and a way to fit these units in this particular property or on this particular property. And then you come over to this side here, and there, this is the townhome concept, and there are 61 townhomes, 190 parking stalls, there's 28 guest stalls, and 81 driveways, and 81 garages. So, these people all have their own driveways, they actually all have their own little backyards or patios that they can access, so there's a lot of open space. Again, there's a play area here, there's another park here, and then, of course, you have open space along the drainageway. So, each one of these little pockets and each one of these different types of housing has, you know, park ground in it, it's got two clubhouses with swimming pools, it's got a number of amenities. My understanding, it's not shown here, but I believe that there's going to be a trail that kind of meanders through here that will make a connection between the various uses here and up to the future community commercial area, and I haven't talked much about that yet. This is Lot 3, and that's going to be a future community commercial area on the corner. There's not really anything planned at this point, but it's just called out as a future commercial, community commercial area. Town Center Parkway is the only public street. All the other streets within the development are private in nature, they serve really every aspect of all the different mixes of housing. Of course, you have Shram Road that we talked about, to the south, that will be constructed with this particular development, as well as 66th, that will be constructed with this development. I would point out, if you all recall, with 72 Place and 72 Place South, there's a regional park that will be in this location here, so the park ground is pretty well identified for this proposed development. Again, the gross density, if you take the total number of acres by the number of units, I believe it's like 10.1 units per acre. We've actually dropped the number of lots that was at the Planning Commission, I believe we were showing 456 units at that time, and that had a density of 17 units per acre. We're now down to 405 units, so that's 51 less than we were showing at the Planning Commission, so the density's somewhat less than the 17 units per acre. So, again, this is entirely consistent with your comp plan. It provides for that missing middle, the diversity of housing that I think the city needs. Of course, right off Highway 370 supports your shopping center to the, to the west, and of course, provides for enough density to afford to construct Shram Road and also to construct 66th Street, which are really important arterials or collectors to get people from the south and east and west up to Highway 370. So, with that, oh, also, one last thing, there is a public sanitary sewer that actually has to be brought from the north under Highway 370 that will serve additional properties as well. So, with that particular, with this particular development, you know, you have a lot of infrastructure being called for and provided with this particular development. One of the things that's always important is making sure that you have adequate density that, so you can afford to pay for those public improvements, because if you don't have adequate density, you can't afford to construct Shram Road, you can't afford to construct 66th Street, you can't afford to reconfigure the traffic signals at 66th and Highway 370, and you certainly can't afford to bring the sanitary sewer from the north down to the south. So, with that, I think I've covered everything, the plan, oh, I guess I did want to show you the, the ideas behind the various types of housing. The idea is to start construction on the south and work our way up to the north. So, what we have here, this is showing the cottages, and these are conceptual in nature. These are showing the direct access apartments and what the elevations might look like. And then, this is showing the four-story apartments, which is the type of housing that's up in the northwest quadrant of the platted area. And then, here is showing the townhomes that's in this particular location. So, they all have arrows as to, you know, what's going to conceptually, what the housing's going to conceptually look like in each different quadrant. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm also happy to respond to any opposition, if there is any today, but to me, this is a really well-designed project, given the constraints that we have, and I think a lot of work has gone into this with staff to really come up with the best product we can at this particular location. So, with that, I'll turn it over to...
Mr. Mungard.
Okay, this might be a dumb question, but 66th Street and Shram Road, you have to, by this approval, well, by approval of the plat, et cetera, you would have to construct both of those, 66 all the way down to Shram, Shram all the way over to 66.
Correct. So, if you recall with 72 Place, this is your way to, to do this, Shram Road was constructed from here to here to serve 72 Place, right? And the idea was that when this development came along, that this development wouldn't have to contribute to this portion of Shram Road, but they would have to construct the full build-out of this portion of Shram Road to 66th Street. And then ultimately, 66th Street will have to be constructed as well, and that's in the future, because right now, if you built it, it would go nowhere. So, the idea is that your main access is going to be off Shram until the high school comes into the south, and, and, and let's face it, we're going to need a lot of development to pay for 66th Street to provide access to the properties to the south, to the regional park to the south. So, if you don't have a project like this, I don't know how you ever get there. Ultimately, when the property east of 66th Street gets developed, they would contribute to the cost of 66th Street as well. So, it's a, it's really a sharing arrangement amongst all these various developments here to make sure that the infrastructure is being installed and constructed to really serve the entire area down here.
Well, okay, and I see by the, the information we've been provided, that ultimately, you would be responsible for building 66th Street up to Highway 370, correct?
Well, it would be, yes, but it would be a sharing arrangement, so when and if this property to the east would be developed, they would actually share in the cost.
Okay, and then you would actually have to have some sort of a, an interchange with Highway 370?
Correct, but that, that is the access point, 66 does...
Okay, here's what concerns me, is when you say that 66th Street then wouldn't happen until some undefined, unknown time in the future, that means that all of the traffic to get in and out of this place has to use Shram Road, correct?
Well, but that's true with any development, I mean, not everything goes at once, and it, so, so you don't have this, well, then how do you, then, so when this property to the south develops, there's no one to pay for this link, length of, or segment of 66th Street. I mean, you need it all together to work, to make sure that there's enough funds available, the economics work, to make sure that this infrastructure is installed to serve everybody. Otherwise, you can't just piecemeal it, because if you don't have this, then the guys down here can't afford to get there. So, this is the first leg, everything's, everything's provided for in the subdivision agreements, as you know. So, the triggering mechanism would be in the subdivision agreement that gets approved with the final plat and the rezoning at this council down the road. And so, we will have to determine what is the triggering event to construct 66th Street, and at some point, in order to develop the commercial area on the corner here, 66th Street is going to have to be installed, obviously, because you're not going to be able to provide access to the commercial. When all of this other development comes in here, you're going to have to have 66th and Shram Road constructed. Shram Road's going to be constructed day one, because it has to be, that's where the access points for this proposed development accesses, you know, and you have to have multiple accesses to build the number of units that we're talking about here in Phase 1. And again, they're talking about building really from the south and then heading north. It's really all part of one phase, but with the development of the size, it's sort of phased, just because of...
Well, I understand your practical problems, but what you're telling us is that we are looking at approving a very large development that will have four-story apartment buildings, I saw the numbers, 400 and some apartments, and will have, you know, a large number of other housing, and there will be one way in and out of that. And now that, you know, without, there'll be one way in and out of there, and we would have no control over when that, if that's a problem, how do we fix the problem? Because we wouldn't have been able to force you to go pull 66th Street. And then I sit here and I see the objections that have been raised at the Planning Commission, well, that 66th Street, that area to the east of 66th Street is being, they're opposing this now, and so, that might be undeveloped 12, 15 years. So, what do we do to avoid that kind of a problem?
Well, I don't think it's going to be 10 to 15 years before this develops, I think Papillion's growing at a pretty significant rate.
Well, if we, if we had a timeline, you know, if you came in here and gave us a timeline, that 66 is going to come through at least to shout at Town Center Parkway...
Shram Road is a collector road, it has a signal at 72nd and Shram. We have two access points, we have an access point at this location and an access point at this location, so there's two access points onto Shram Road. This segment of Town Center Parkway or Town Center Drive will be constructed right away, the question will be, how far does it go until 66th Street is done?
Well, I'd say it's worthless until you have 66th Street connected.
Well, but then, don't do anything.
Well, here's what I'm looking at.
And that's the, that's the answer.
I, no, I propose, to overcome my concerns, we come up with some sort of a time-limited, some sort of an agreement that limits you how long you can go without extending 66th Street, at least from 370 to Town Center Parkway. You drive it, and it's kind of, so you don't have to completely wait for that eastern side to share the cost, we're just talking about the money. And so, I want to make sure that people can get onto 370 without getting back onto 72nd Street.
That will only happen with this particular development. It will not happen if this development doesn't go, because there won't be anybody to develop or pay for 66th Street. So, this is really part and parcel to 66th Street, extending from Shram Road to Highway 370. You don't have this, you don't have anything, and it's something, you have to start at some point where you get nothing, right?
Well, I would propose that we come back and, and as one of the, I'm talking to planning now, one of the conditions imposed would be that there's a time limit on how, how long you can develop before you have to build the northern section of Highway of 66th Street. And, and you'll have a time limit, so if there, if the eastern side does not develop during that time limit, you come back in and try to get a modification, you look for different funding, all those options are still open for you, but let's not start now saying, oh, we're going to throw it to the winds and see what happens for the next 10, 12, 15 years.
And I wasn't saying that. What I was saying is that you have a subdivision agreement that would have triggering events that would trigger 66th Street, 66th Street being installed. Maybe, maybe it's tied to, you know, you can do all of these houses to the south, but when you do the four multifamily buildings with the 208 units, maybe that's what the triggering event is. But we haven't talked about those specific triggering events for 66th Street, but, but now, this is the preliminary plat, the time to really talk about that is as we move forward. Again, this is a preliminary plat that we're trying to comply with your comp plan, we're trying to address all the various issues that are raised by the staff and by us.
When we get to council discussion on the next agenda item, which is the preliminary plat, I'm going to ask staff to maybe comment a little bit about the subdivision agreement, the triggering events, and also the required traffic study, and then we think we can continue that during the council discussion.
Okay, and that's fine, because I want to talk to staff about that, too. I just don't want to surprise you. I mean, I'm not going to vote for this and then come, then say, oh, by the way, Mr. Jobin, there's this, there's this extra problem, I see.
So, we'll pick this up during council discussion on the next agenda.
Okay, then, thank you. I'll turn, I'll turn to staff, and I see that the staff recommendation for approval is contingent on 28 different conditions. Now, that seems to me to be an ex, a large, an unusually large number of conditions. Am I wrong, or is there... Am I wrong, or is there some explanation for that?
So we'll, let's do that on the next one, since this is still public hearing. I want to stay...
No, these are the...
I know, right, but right now, we're in a public hearing. But we do have council discussion on the next agenda item, so be ready for that. Mr. Gibbons, Mr. Sunday.
Yes, I've got a few questions. Thank you. With regard to 66th Street, where it meets up with 370, as you proposed, is that even been cleared with the State Nebraska Department of Roads yet?
I believe 66th Street is an approved location to intersect with Highway 370.
It is, okay. And then my second question was with regard to the sewer. You mentioned doing something to the north. Could you elaborate on that?
So this property only sewers... Get you a drawing, everything to see here. Oh, right here. So I believe the sanitary sewer, and Kyle's here, too, so if you have the sewer plan, here, here we go.
So would that involve a taking of property to the north? Is that what you're saying?
Potentially. I mean, the idea is that you want to work with them. Now, the sanitary sewer, as you notice, is located in a drainage way, a natural swell. That's where you want them to be located. It's not like we're going through the middle of their developable property. Remember, they benefit from that as well, because they can tap into that sanitary sewer.
No, it's just a question, is all.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, so, so it's, it's in this location that runs right along the drainage way. This is north, this is 370, so this is north. Makes this connection to the property to the north, to the south, so it really completes that sanitary downfall sewer that everyone can connect to. So it's a benefit to not only this development, but also to the property to the north.
No more questions, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mungard.
Well, I'm just kind of, Mayor, I don't want to get offline here, but, but I got a question here that affects the preliminary plat, and it's...
Preliminary plat's the next agenda item.
Well, it affects the zoning change, because, excuse me, because those are the conditions that the staff placed upon the approval of the zoning change. And maybe I'm completely off, but that's where I find them. And I find that there's 28 conditions that may not be an excess, an unusually large number of conditions.
Mr. Gibbons.
So with this type of development, because of the, the, the size of the development, the number of conditions and the, the actions that were required, or the, the number of conditions that you're seeing, a lot of these are what we call standard boilerplate language. It's complying with subdivision regulations, zoning regulations, and them agreeing to do additional steps for their final plat if so approved. That would be providing the, the traffic impact study and providing the improvements that are required, drainage reports, also doing the wetlands mitigation, providing copies and documentation from NDOT for the 66th Street connection to 370. So a lot of these are their checklist items that they would have to complete with the final plat option, if so choose.
Okay, well, here's my question. I see in here, as a condition, they have to agree to enter into a subdivision agreement to address the improvement of Schramm Road, and they have to get some sort of preliminary approval from the state about the intersection of 66 and 370. But I don't see any obligation to agree to enter into a subdivision agreement to address the improvement of 66th Street. Why is that missing here in the zoning, when, when we refer to Schramm Road, but not 66th Street?
Well, with the subdivision agreement, they, the SID and the developer, or the developer in this nature, would have to get, they would be responsible for the, obtaining the right-of-way for 66th Street, also for Schramm Road, and also constructing. This is a, this is not a phased development, as it was submitted. This is a one-phase development. So 66th Street would be as part, a part of the subdivision agreement for improvement. As for the construction of 66th Street and the timing of that, we can put that language in the subdivision agreement, of course. I do know, speaking with the engineers with this project, it will take several years for them to work through the grading and the approvals with NDOT. So there is some talk about putting some type of language in the subdivision agreement, but they are on the hook to provide that connection with this development.
Okay, well, I'll just tell you, in my simplistic way of looking at it, if we're going to require them to have a subdivision agreement to tell us how and when they're going to improve Schramm Road, I want a similar subdivision agreement to tell us when and how they're going to improve at least the northern section of 66th Street.
I think the way we can handle that formally is at the next council meeting, because I think you're tying it to the change of zone, which is this public hearing. So the next council meeting will actually be council discussion of vote. We could do an amendment.
Yes, I just don't want anybody surprised at the, when this comes back, I don't want to surprise anybody. That's going to be a condition to get my vote for the zoning change. And without the zoning change, the preliminary plat's a nice piece of picture, but it doesn't mean anything, right?
But in the meantime, the applicant and Mr. Gibbons can work together and then maybe loop you in if there needs to be an amendment when we vote at the next council meeting.
I understand, but I just want everybody to understand that's where I'm going.
Yeah, thank you. Any, we are still in the public hearing. Public hearing's open. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents or anybody neutral? Welcome. State your name and address for the record.
Jim Ravick, 7020 Beth Avenue, Papillion. I was, until the end of the month, on, on the Planning Commission, but we express the same concerns as you, Mr. Mungard.
Now, you're speaking as an individual, not as the Planning Commission.
Right.
Correct.
Yes. But in the same regard, we had concerns about the commercial areas to the north of the project without the improvement of 66th Street, at least down to Schramm, so we're not, we weren't dealing with one arterial out to 72nd. And that was a concern for us. That's why we tabled it. So I guess that's all I've got to say. We, I have the same concerns as you, so.
Well, I'll tell, I'll tell you, I saw that, and I'm not so concerned about getting 66 all the way to Schramm, but at least it ought to go down to Town Center Parkway.
Well, if they, like I said, if they could bring at least from Town Center, 66 down to Schramm, so you have two, at least two access points.
I guess my thought was the, the 400 and some people who are living, are living in those apartments up there are more likely to want to use Town Center Parkway and get over to 66 and get on the highway.
Exactly.
And they are to wander through the houses below them and get to, get to Schramm.
Same, same concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other opponents or anybody neutral? Welcome. If you'd also state your name and address for the record.
Terry Thai, 14102 South 108th Street, Springfield. The reason I'm up here is I'm the man that owns the land that 66 and 370 is going to be accessed through, and I want everybody to know that I have no interest in contributing any money or real estate towards the development of 66th Street. And I've got a little map here. This was a non-scientific... There's over 17, within a mile radius of this property, there's over 17 apartment complexes. And I don't think there's any need for more rental units in the area. Some of these have more than 10 multi-story buildings, and this project in itself will bring more than 400 rental units and 840 parking stalls. Expect a lot of traffic. There's no reason to occupy Highway 370 corridor with rental units and apartments. This protected corridor, the major thoroughfare bisecting Papillion, should be used for business and commerce. I think apartments and rental projects should be off, away from the business districts. And the land to the east of this hasn't even been developed, so there's potential there for even more apartments. I noticed there was two maps floating around. Both of them came from the developer, I believe. This was the original one, and noticed that it had five buildings here, and there was access here on Town Center Parkway up to 66th Street. And it was a T-intersection, and this was the latest, this was the initial map. The latest map I noticed has been changed, and I understand they can make changes, but this wasn't what was presented to the planning board. And now what they have is, according to the plan, and I believe a new traffic study needs to be done, but they have Town Center Parkway connecting up here to 66th Street with a T-intersection with a median. This is only a right-in, right-out intersection. So anybody in this development that wants to go up Town Center Parkway and go to Highway 370, they're unable to do that unless they come down here where they can pull a U-turn, and it's going to be a pretty heavily traveled intersection there, or they have to migrate through the residential area, which is dangerous in itself, over 400, or 200 people here in these apartments. And initially, I believe these apartments were built here because they thought that Town Center Parkway was going to connect through, but that'll, that'll never happen due to the fact that Mr. Parks has said that he's entitled to keep his land, and they'll never foreclose or take it, or eminent domain or anything like that. It will not be developed until he's ready to let that happen. So everybody is going to have to, all these apartments, this high-density stuff, is going to have to come down Town Center Parkway to 66th Street, where there's a median, they're going to have to go this way, and then they'll have to do a U-turn, or they're going to have to go down to that single access out on Schramm Road. Mr. Mungard pointed that out. And Town Center Parkway will be a dead end here, and over here, it's only going to be Another issue with this plan is the waivers they're asking. Front yard setbacks are asked to be decreased from 25 to 20 foot, with some of the front yard setbacks being decreased from 25 to 10 foot. Street landscaping is decreased from 15 foot to 10 foot. Yard buffers decrease from 20 to 15 foot, and the building height is increased from 40 to 58 foot, bringing these rental apartment projects to rival the four-story Cobalt Bank Building. Are you ready to concede waivers like this for all other developers? I think the distance around these buildings is very tight. As you can see down in here, there's not much room between these buildings, and I think it could be a fire and a safety hazard. At least apartments enjoy the convenience of firewalls breaking them up for fires. I think down here, if there was ever a fire, due to the fact that emergency vehicles couldn't get in there and have issues with that, driving through these narrow streets with parking on both sides, I think not too long ago, we just saw a fire out in that area, and it swept over from Capeport to, to the highway. But I don't think this is a place for this project at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents or anybody neutral? Welcome.
Joni and Eric Parks, 11515 South 72nd Street. Our concern is the high density is right budded up next to our property. We're ag. I thought you could not have high density budded up next to low density. And also, per the Planning Commission meeting that we went to, per 205-231, a 30-foot landscape buffer is required along the western boundary, because it's adjacent, it's zoned ag, developed with an existing residential use, and a house that is over 200 feet from the shared lot line. Our, we have two buildings on the property. One is our main house, and the other is an outbuilding, which we also have a kitchen and living in, too. That's less than 100 feet from that. And also, how it can go from 30 feet, taking it down...
40 feet, or taking it to 15.
Taking it to 15 feet, moving that from the north property, and putting that on the north property, which is next to 370. I don't understand how that's something that you can just change the rules, the laws, the ordinances, because...
I mean, Larry was saying that he was firmly complying to all your guys' requirements for this project, but this is your guys' requirement, and you're bending that rule for this one development. I mean, in the future, if I decide to develop my property, are you going to bend the rule for me, too?
And also, Town Center Parkway will not go through until I get carried out in a pine box. So that one's not going to go through. And if the people to the east do not sell, that, that will not come through. So you're going to have one, one outlet, and you're going to have a school that's being developed just south of that, that's going to be pouring on to 72nd as well. 370 and 72nd are about max capacity at this moment, and we're going to put more people...
Well, with the current design, we're going to create a nightmare on Highway 372 and Highway 370. I mean, that many people coming in and out of what's already a saturated road system is going to be a complete nightmare. I mean, I live there, I travel that every day, and if you, if you approve this without them putting 66th Street through, it's going to be a nightmare, a complete nightmare.
And we're not opposed to progress? Love our sac, our Cobalt neighbors.
It's just an awful lot of traffic already, and...
But you have, the fire that came through that was feet from our property, the fire trucks had no way to get there. They didn't know how to get there. We had to show them how to get, get back in there to contain that, because it was jumping 370. You have to be have, be able to have your fire and police be able to get through, and, you know, 370 has accidents, 370, 72nd can have accidents, I don't know how many times a week. It's, it's a high-density traffic the way it is. Just concerned that we don't want it to turn into not the Papillion that we know and love.
I mean, it's, I understand development, and it's, it's common, but when we do it, I feel we need to do it right. And, you know, every develop, developer needs to abide by what our laws are and what makes sense in the city of Papillion.
And working for the future. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents or neutral? Seen none? For the property legally described as attractive land located in the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter, section 36 Township, 14 North Range, 12 East, 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska. Located northwest corner, South 66th Street and Schramm Road, the applicant Spruce Capital Group Thai Farm. It's a public hearing. I'll take all the comments from the previous one to this one, but I'll still open a public hearing. Proponents?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the applicant with me is Kyle Hasi of E&amp;A Consulting, the consulting engineers on this particular project. Everything pretty much stands for what we talked about before. Maybe I can address some of the issues that were brought up by the opponents. I guess what I would say about Town Center Drive is connectivity, as Dave and Bob know in Omaha, that's a fundamental element of the master plan, to make sure that when and if properties that are adjacent to the proposed development develop, that there is connectivity, that, that you don't just provide access to this one development and don't provide access to the Parks property if and when they choose to sell it, develop it, do whatever they want with the property. But eventually... But eventually, its highest and best use is probably not what it is today. Not that it's not a great use, it's their home, I appreciate that, but no one's talking about running Town Center Drive through their property. It won't be until and if their property ever gets developed in the future. And if you read the recommendation report, the reason for the buffers, and when I said it wasn't compliant with everything, it's in compliance with all the zoning codes because we're using the PUD 2 with respect to this development. That PUD 2 allows for some of those waivers. So the idea is, along the western boundary line, is that there was a waiver from the 30-foot required landscape buffer to 20 feet on Lot 1, which is here, and then from 30 feet to 15 feet on Lot 4. The idea is that the highest and best use of this property, the Parks property, down the road is not what it is today. The farmhouse itself, or their house, I should say, is 200 feet away from the property line, and their outbuilding, I think they even acknowledged it was 100 feet away from the property line. So the idea is, why have this 30-foot buffer here that eventually, when this property to the west develops, now all of a sudden you have this incredibly wide buffer between the two developments, and you don't need it because they're compatible with each other based upon what the likelihood is of this property developing and the types of uses that are going to be developed on the property to the west. So it's actually providing for a compatible landscape buffer between this particular development and the development when and if it occurs to the west. So that was the logic behind the waivers. It wasn't trying to, you know, cram the property up against their proposed development. I think what it was really doing is taking into consideration the distance between the Parks home, their outbuilding, the property line, and the fact that ultimately, the highest and best use will be something different than what it is today, that that property will be developed that will be compatible with what's being proposed today. And so, we're talking a lot about 66th Street and 72nd Street. Everyone's saying that 72nd Street is bottlenecked and it's got, you know, a lot of traffic on it, and I don't disagree with that. But the only way to alleviate the traffic on 72nd Street is provide an alternative. Well, the only way you provide an alternative is allow for development that can pay for 66th Street to be installed. If you don't have this development or one to the east, when and if it develops, it, you know, at some point, you know it's going to develop. Property typically does. When the value gets high enough, it will, you know, be developed for something. But every bit of the development has to go to contribute to the infrastructure costs. And, you know, development isn't without regard to economics. I mean, economics are everything in some of these developments. And if it's not economically feasible, well, then you just kill every deal. So the idea is to step into it and provide what you can, when you can. And I guess what I would point out, you know, we talked about a total of, you know, 405 units, but there is only 165 units south of Town Center Drive. And that's the first, that's where development's going to start. That's two access points onto Shram Road, which is a collector's street. So only 165 units are south of Town Center Drive. When you get north of Town Center Drive, that's when you have 240 additional units. Well, at that point in time, that's where your triggering event could happen. I mean, we can discuss that. We haven't really, we've talked about making sure that 66th Street is installed at some point, and we agree that it should be installed at some point, right? But when is that right moment? Well, the right moment is when there's enough traffic generated by this particular project, potentially others, and the economics makes sense, right? You just can't go out and build infrastructure without regard to economics. So we can talk about all that, and that's all in the subdivision agreement, and we don't disagree with that. I mean, that, that, we completely understand, the developer completely understands, that that will be something in the subdivision agreement that will have to be dealt with. But there's only 165 units south of Town Center Drive with two access points onto a collector's street, and that's what's being proposed today. Now, we can talk about triggering events in the future as to when Town Center Drive has to make the connection to 66, and when 66 has to be connected, or constructed, I should say, based upon not only this particular development, but also the developments to the south. Because, look, you have a regional park. How are you going to, if you don't do this deal, how are you going to get to the regional park? You're going to only get there off 72nd Street. Well, this provides a completely different route for people to get off 72nd Street to get to the high school and the regional park. So again, all this stuff, all these developments come together to make sure that we have adequate infrastructure to serve really everybody. So with that, I think I answered all of the various questions, and again, I'm happy to answer more questions and respond to any opposition.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Okay, I'll just, I'll ask procedurally. I'm going to, after we close the public hearing on this, I'm going to make a motion to hold this matter over for two weeks to the next meeting to answer some of the questions. But I want to hear Mr. Jobin's comments on that. Can I ask him that now, or should I wait till I make the motion?
And I think what I'll do is, well, since we're in the public hearing, we'll continue the public hearing, I'll close the public hearing, so we have something to act on. Well, I guess I'll ask City Attorney, do we want to, if there is a request either by the applicant or a council member to table, do we do that before the motion? Or do we take the motion and then act on that with a table? Do we table and not have a motion, or do we have a motion and then a table?
I would take the motion.
Okay. So we'll close, we'll finish the public hearing, we'll close it. I'll call for a motion in a second. We'll get into council discussion, and I think to be fair to the applicant and staff, we'll go through council discussion so they know what the questions may be. As council discussion winds down, we'll take the motion to table if that's what we're going to do. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Any other additional?
I had a question for Mr. Jobin.
Yes, go ahead, Mr., I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Sunday.
Sorry, I did that to you again after you sat down, but...
That's okay. I can pop up and down.
I'm curious, were you part of the Titan Springs development all those years ago?
I did not do the original Titan Springs. I did the Hillcrest Country Estates on the other side of the drainageway.
Okay. You had indicated that 66th Street couldn't be developed without the neighbors sharing the burden. I just wanted you to know that all those years ago, 66th Street was built in by the developer of Titan Springs with no help from any outside property owners. Just so you know, there's precedent for that. It's not unheard of.
That was probably their only access on that side. I don't know the answer to that. I mean, times change, you know. What I would say to you is, it's not like this development isn't picking up its fair share of public infrastructure day one. I mean, we're doing the sanitary sewer, outfall, we're doing the Shram Road improvements, and we're doing the Town Center improvements to some degree. So it, it, it's not without some contributing factor to the public infrastructure day one. The question is, do you build this street, 66th Street, that really goes nowhere today, or do you wait until there's a real need for 66th Street to be constructed, whether it be by this particular project or the projects to the south, the high school, the park, you know, those kinds of things? So...
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still in the public hearing. Do we have any other opponents or neutral?
Eric Parks, 11515 South 72nd Street. So I'm going back to the setbacks, the 30-foot, then moving it to 15. So if I develop a plan to build similar buildings, are you going to approve a 15-foot setback for me? So we'd have their building sitting here, my building sitting there, about this far apart, the width of this room. To me, that seems, you know, if you approve it for them, then I'm going to expect the same treatment if I bring it in front of you guys. So my question to you guys, does that seem like it's going to be really cluttered if this development goes forward? I mean, that's not very far apart versus if you held to your rule, your law, it would be double, it'd be 60-foot. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others? If you'd state your name and address for the record.
Carla Ty, 14102 South 108th Street, Springfield, Nebraska. We own the property that would connect 66 to 370, and our families owned that land for 61 years, and we're not planning on selling it for at least another 60 years. So when it does come time to try to develop that land, we'll, we'll be against it then, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R. 230112? Motion by Councilman Stube? Thinking by Councilman Glover. Council discussion. We'll go ahead and have the council discussion as it sounds like it's wrapping up. Then if there is a desire to do a motion to table, we'll take it at that point. Council discussion. Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no question that there's been a lot of discussion about this one, and if Mr. Mumgarth makes a motion to, to lay this over, I will support that, assuming that this doesn't have an impact on the developer. But in this particular case, obviously, we know this is preliminary plat, so it's very, very early in the stage from this development. It is kind of sandwiched into large parcels that, from what I understand based on the opponents tonight, they're not proposing to make any sale to develop, which has an impact on this particular development. But as part of all of the conditions that Mr. Mumgarth pointed out, traffic study would be one, entering into subdivision agreements, putting in potentially triggers. I know Mr. Jobin indicated that it's kind of one phase, but he also indicated that probably the emphasis initially on building that is going to be in the southern portion, which abuts Shram Road. So it makes it easier from the perspective of getting those individuals out, first having access to 66th Street, having access to Highway 370. So again, I'm going to vote for the preliminary plat because, again, there's significant amount of work between the developer and city staff that have to go through in order to be able to come to us with a final plat and also with a subdivision agreement that essentially allows for all council members and staff to have some significant input into, with regard to what that looks like. Thank you.
Mr. Sunday.
Yeah, I would also like to just disclose for, for another reason. I have a partial ownership interest in the undeveloped property on the other side of the highway, and through my questions tonight, learned that it could have a direct impact on that land. So I think I'm quite possibly having to recuse any kind of vote or, or even discussion anyway. So I wouldn't be comfortable doing that tonight. And I'd like to confer with City Attorney before I make a final decision on that.
Well, go ahead and respect that, and it, I think it, based on our bylaws, it's totally your right if you think there is a conflict to declare that. But state law, whether you have a real one or just a perceived one, will let you visit with the attorney and then make that determination. Thank you for disclosing that. Mr. Fanslow.
Yeah, thank, thank you. There's been a lot of talk about 66th Street, and I share Tom's concerns about it going in. Bob said a lot, what I was going to say about what's the triggering mechanism that 66th Street will have to be put in. It's, it's mentioned in the report that 66th Street shall be in. I'm not sure it made it specifically to the conditions, but number five in the recommendation report talks about 66th Street, this developer having to obtain property owner, property from the east. So I share the concerns about 66. There probably is a mechanism to, with the traffic study and what portions get developed, but at some point, 66 is an arterial street, so to ignore it as part of this development, I don't think it would be short-sighted in the long term, obviously. I think there's enough time in between the preliminary plat and the final plat, final subdivision agreement with staff, that this can move along. So I would support that as well, but there might be a motion to lay it over, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gaines.
Jobin, I had just one question for you. There's not a motion to table this on the floor currently, but can you tell me what effect a motion to table would have on the developer for the two-week period?
Well, the only thing I would say is that there's, there's still a long ways to go between the preliminary plat and the final plat. We've been working on this project now for almost a year and has been under contract for almost a year, and we just extended the due diligence for another 180 days, at least, well, actually tomorrow. So, I mean, there's, it's not just the developer, it's the property owner, it's, it's other people that are involved in this deal. I, I think I'm comfortable moving this forward because I think there's a whole lot more discussion that has to, you know, be had between the council, between the planning commission, between the staff. I mean, the triggering events, no one's trying to get out of building or constructing 66th Street. I promise you that. And no one's trying to get out of installing the sanitary outfall sewer, I promise you that. No one's trying to get out of Shram Road or Town Center Drive, I promise you that. I mean, these are public improvements that this developer understands and recognizes that they have to build as part of this development. I think, again, development doesn't happen without regard to economics, and I think the idea is, is trying to mirror the development to make sense from an economic perspective to make sure that we have a feasible development, you know, because they all have to work, right? And so, all of this contributes towards that infrastructure that we all acknowledge that's required, that's required, and I don't think we're trying to get out of that by any stretch. And, and so I, I would, to the extent possible, would like to see the preliminary plat go through because it takes a long time to work out the details on the subdivision agreement. I mean, it, you know, your subdivision agreements are pretty extensive. I mean, we'll, we'll probably not be back before you for six, seven, eight months, possibly. I mean, so it's going to take that amount of time to work through all of the issues, and if we stop this here, and, and all you really have is a preliminary plat with four lots and, and one public street, it, it seems like we could be able to move things along better in, if we could approve the preliminary plat today so we could really start working on, on the other things that are necessary, that I think are more important, and more important to the council as far as when do these things occur, how are they paid for, those kinds of things. That's the details that I think we need to get to. And, look, in the end, we don't get there, I guess we don't get there on both sides, you know? So I think everyone loses if we don't get there, but I think we should at least give it a chance to get there and move it forward. If for some reason, it's the council's desire to lay it over, I am, you guys meet the first and third Tuesdays, is the first meeting August 1st, so I'm out of town, so if you do, are inclined to lay it over, I hope you don't. But if you are, I'd like to move it to the third meeting because otherwise, I won't be here, and that would be a bad thing, I think.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So I just want to kind of echo what Councilman Stube and Fanslow said, is that, you know, this is such an early point in this development that we can move this preliminary plat through tonight and have, as Mr. Jobin said, six to eight months of time for him to work with the city. So I, I'm in favor right now of moving the preliminary plat forward, and, you know, the next meeting, when it comes for a final plat, or, you know, we'll have to bring these back up, and hopefully the city staff and the developer and owner will be able to work out the issues by then, so.
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarth.
Well, I just want to tell you, Mr. Jobin and the developer, I really like your plan. I think that is a good use of that land. I really like the vics of the houses, the apartments, I mean, the small walk-in apartments and the cottages, I really like that. Ultimately, I probably will vote to approve what you, what you're doing, but I think there, well, I won't go into the why I'm asking for a continuation, but I'll tell you right now, yes, I like your plan. And if it's an appropriate time...
Got one more council member in the queue. Mr. Stube.
So I had indicated, obviously, my support for the preliminary plat. Based on some discussion going back forth between Councilmember Gaines and the developer, I would probably be opposed to any type of layover for those reasons that, one, there is a significant amount of time that takes place between getting a preliminary plat approved, the number of conditions that have to be worked out between the developer and city staff before it comes back to us. And so, in, in some respects, whether it gets voted up or whether it gets voted down, I think... think giving the developer an indication this evening, I think, makes it a little bit easier, if it gets approved, for the developer to be able to work with city staff relative to the multiple conditions. So I'm not going to support a layover.
Any other counsel on discussion of the motion that's on the table?
Just from a procedural standpoint, since I won't be voting if we're voting tonight, that would leave five people, would have to be unanimous to have a quorum.
That is correct.
Right.
Mr. Momgad. Leave it up to you.
Well, okay. At this point, I would like to, I would make a motion to lay over Resolution R 23-112 to the meeting that the applicant has requested be, my motion be, that would be, I think, the August 15th meeting. I realize, and I'll tell you why, I realize this has been in there for a long time. I don't think that at least two weeks, maybe four weeks, is going to make that much difference. You've heard our views. My fear is that we're being asked, well, let's go back to Mr. Jobin talked about connectivity. I would say, yes, connectivity is extremely important. And I just want more certainty on the connectivity. I guess I've been in government long enough to know that if it's not spelled out, it may not happen. And I'm just asking that we give time to spell out that there has to be a written agreement on 66th Street. And, you know, spelling out what he referred to as the triggering events. I'm not telling you right now what they ought to be, but they ought to be put down in writing. And, you know, and it's, he talked about that they're paying their fair share of public improvements. Well, no, there's nothing in here talking about paying their fair share of 66th Street. That's an uncertainty. Long and short of it is, there's many, to my mind, uncertain questions about how 66th Street is going to get in there and give us the required connectivity to do what he was talking about. And my fear is that if we go ahead and approve the preliminary plat, just based upon, well, people saying, yeah, we'll work it out, we'll work it out, I've seen that before. Maybe I'm too cynical, I don't know, maybe I'm cynical of government and how it works. I've seen it before. And I'm saying that, well, I know from history that when the final plat comes in, our hands are tied. We can't approve, we can't require a final plat that significantly differs from the preliminary plat. So no, this isn't too early to be asking for some certainty on 66th Street. And that's all I'm doing is, okay, let's give it a few weeks to build the certainty, put it in writing, come back, then fine, we can approve the preliminary plat at that point.
So is that a motion?
So I have that, so that's why I've made that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilman Gaines. So what's on the floor is the motion to lay over for two meetings, date certain. And we're in discussion on that item. Mr. Sunday made a very important point. We do have two council members absent. For an item to pass, it does require a majority of the whole council, which is five. We have six here. One has declared that he was going to abstain, and so that...
I think I'm allowed to vote.
That's where I was going to go, and I'm going to leave that up to you two. Because the motion to table really is nothing to do with the question, I personally think you have a right to participate in this, but I'll leave that up to you two to decide that. If you do participate...
I'm comfortable voting on the procedure, but not on the substantial.
So on this item, with six council members, we can have one, one, one no vote. It would take five to pass, five of the six. So we do have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Mr. Stube.
Yes, so I got the impression from when the motion was made in second that Mr. Jobin would like to say something, so I'd like to have him come up and kind of state his position again.
Mr. Jobin.
Thank you, Mr. Stube, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, I guess the only thing, just to address where you're going, Mr. Momgad, is this preliminary plat is four lots and a public right-of-way. Three weeks aren't going to change that. And nothing is ever in writing at the preliminary plat stage, so I'm not sure what we're going to accomplish by three weeks. What's in writing is what's in the subdivision agreement at some point that comes with the final plat. And what I'm afraid of in some respects is we're going to have the same exact discussion with the same exact result because nothing will change, because this isn't the time in a preliminary plat where you have that obligation in writing. So we're simply really delaying it to have another exact same kind of Groundhog Day, if you will, and we're going to say the same things, that we're going to have two council members that didn't have the benefit of this entire discussion. So we're going to have, and I appreciate your support of the project, and I appreciate that you like the housing types and everything else. All of those issues are going to have to be resolved to your satisfaction. And just because the final plat conforms to the preliminary plat, that doesn't mean you can't deny the zoning ultimately, or you can't design the, you can't vote against the subdivision agreement, for example, because you don't agree with the way 66th Street is being dealt with. I think those issues can be adequately addressed later. I think we just move it three weeks, and we have the same discussion with no real movement or no real new information. That's what I'm afraid of. I don't want to waste anyone's time, and because I think we just get to the same place. Whereas I'd rather have some real discussion, and I'm happy to meet with anyone outside of this between now and final plat, to make sure that we address your concerns about 66th Street and Schramm Road and Town Center Drive and when those items have to be constructed. I think that's fair, I really do. But I think to expect something in writing within three weeks when that's really not the process on a preliminary plat, I think we end up delaying it for three weeks and we're here again doing the same thing. That's all I'm afraid of. But I respect what you're saying, and I respect that you want to make sure that 66th Street is addressed, Schramm Road is addressed, Town Center Drive is addressed. I get that completely. And we're going to be expected to do that, and we know that. I mean, that's part of the process, so.
Okay, well, maybe I have a solution here.
Okay.
First off, I got a question. Is the motion to approve the preliminary plat subject to the contingencies that are set out by the staff report?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And that's part of our normal policy.
And I'm going to make a second motion, a motion to amend those contingencies to include a requirement that the developer agrees to enter into a subdivision agreement to address the improvement of 66th Street from Highway 370 to at least Town Center Parkway. You would agree with that, wouldn't you, Mr. Jobin?
I don't have any objection to that. I mean, we're going to have to talk about, you know, the details when that occurs exactly, but I have no problem with that. I mean...
Well, as I sit here, I see that we have a written agreement here, that we have a written requirement that you come to a subdivision agreement with Schramm, but nothing's said about 66. Let's talk about 66.
I think that's totally fair. I don't have any objection to that as an additional condition, because we're expecting that.
Okay, well, then I will make that motion that I just stated.
The motion that's on the floor...
And withdraw, I will withdraw my motion to lay over.
Okay, so, Mr. Glover, I think, made the second. Are you okay with the withdrawal? You made it. Okay, so we're back to the original motion on the floor, and so that's open. So you want to make an amendment?
Yes, I want to amend the motion to include as one of the required contingencies that the developer agrees to enter into a subdivision agreement to address the improvement of 66th Street from at least Highway 370 to Town Center Parkway. And then I'll just explain, I'm willing to roll the dice that that subdivision agreement will include the details that I've already very vociferously paid out. That's my motion.
So there's a motion made. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Glover. Discussion on the motion to amend. Please vote on the motion to amend.
Four gays, one nay by Gaines, one abstention by Glover.
So the motion to amend fails, so we have the original motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Any other motions? Please vote. Before you vote, I want to make sure everybody understands what's occurring. So I'm not calling for the vote yet. This is a vote on a preliminary plat, and I'm going to ask Mr. Gibbons or Mr. Legal or Mr. Sturzma, my understanding of procedure is if a preliminary plat is denied, it can't come back for a year. Is that correct? Okay. And it takes, we have an abstention, which will be Mr. Sunday, which means we need a unanimous vote tonight, or the motion fails and it can't come back for a year. I want to make sure that's really clear on the off chance somebody still wants a table to motion or wants to proceed.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to see this, because if this, if we lose a year, it's over. I think everyone loses in that respect. So, you know, if we can lay it over to the third Tuesday, I mean, I guess I'm okay with that. Again, I think we find ourselves in the same spot, but if that's what we have to do, that's what we have to do. But what I don't want to have happen is this gets turned down today and we can't refile for a year, because then there won't be a refiling. It'll be over.
So I'll look to council for direction. Mr. Glover.
So a yes vote.
A yes vote is an approval of the preliminary plat, and then, just again, education, I know you guys all know it, for a project to actually be completed, it's got to go from preliminary plat to final plat, and that all includes the final changes zone, the subdivision agreement. So there's a series of votes. Some of those still go through the planning commission, so it's probably, you were saying six to eight months, it's probably eight, nine, 12 months with many, many votes. So what tonight is, is the question of do we approve the preliminary plat? A preliminary plat really is just defining the outline of the four legal lots, the right-of-ways, easements, and I think that's all that really the preliminary plat approves. So that's the question tonight. But I think it's state law, is if a preliminary plat is denied, it cannot come back for an entire year. So I just want to make sure we really understand the process procedurally of what we're doing and the ramifications. So we're in council discussion, we have a motion on the floor. I guess I'll look to council if you want to proceed with a motion to vote, or is there another question? Mr. Gaines.
Well, this is a concern that I was having when I was counting votes, and I was going to ask Mr. Jobin...
I'm not counting votes.
I'm going to, because this is my fear to begin with, is that if the motion to continue failed, which I intended to vote against the motion to continue, that we ran the possibility of then having a four vote, which then your preliminary plat fails. So I'm going to make a motion to continue this to the third meeting in, or the third week of August, to make sure that we have a full council. I don't, I agree with everything that's, I don't think it's making any difference, except for the fact that if for some reason we only come out with four votes in favor, then this can't be brought up for another year. So the motion that I'm making is just to table this until the second meeting in August.
So we have a motion on the table. Is there a second? I was going to miss, you've got a second, so we have a motion and a second to table to the second meeting. Council discussion. Mr. Momgad.
Well, I was going to just say, let's go ahead and approve this. Actually, I was going to say, Mr. Jobin, would you get up there, please?
Yes.
Okay, you heard, you've heard everything I had to say, and you've heard what I want. I want an agreement. Can you stand there and say, you will work on an agreement, and before...
Mr. Mayor, this is a motion to continue, and I don't know if we've even got to council discussion yet.
Well, council discussion for a motion to table, correct.
And I will, I will express my view on that, depending on what Mr. Jobin says. Okay. Will you stand there and agree that before you get, come in here for final approval, for approval of the final plat, whenever that might be, you will have agreed to enter into a subdivision agreement about 66th Street? If you say you'll do it, I trust you.
That's what's expected, yes. We totally anticipate and expect that there'll be some agreement regarding the installation and construction of 66th Street. It has to be done at some point, yes. So I think, I mean, am I not, I think that's correct. I mean, that was the expectation, I think, on every side here, is that we have in the subdivision agreement reference to 66th Street, when it will be installed and how it will be installed, absolutely.
Obviously, I don't want to work on expectations, but I will work on your commitment that it will be there. Because I'm going to vote against the motion to continue, simply because, let's move forward. And I don't like the idea of things getting decided simply because people aren't here. So I'll vote to move, I'll vote for the preliminary plat, just to move it forward based upon his commitment.
Any other discussion on the motion to table, Mr. Gaines?
I will withdraw my motion to table.
You guys are testing me. So the table to withdraw is, the table to motion's withdrawn, we've got the original motion on the table, there are no amendments to the motion to the original motion. Any other discussion on the motion as presented? Please, please vote. I think Mr. Sunday had declared that he's going to abstain from this one, I believe.
Five gays, zero nays, one abstention by Sunday.
Motion passes. Next is item F2, Resolution R 23-0119. A resolution to approve an extension of the West Papillion Catholic Community Preliminary Plat. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 23-0119? Motion by Councilman Gaines? Seconded by Councilman Fanslow. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome.
Jim Stoles, S T O L Z E, 2222 North 111th Street, Omaha 68164. I'm the CFO of...
Hold on, hold on one second. Can any, can we keep discussion in the council chambers down? Please take those into the hallway. Thank you.
Did you catch that? Jim Stoles, I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the Archdiocese. And at this point, we're just not ready to start a new parish. We would just like to file an extension of the preliminary plat.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six gays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F3, Resolution R 23-0121. A resolution to approve an application from Pine and Black Bistro, 248 Olson Drive Suite 101, Papillion, Nebraska 68046, to add an outdoor patio area to the premises of their Class C liquor license. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R 23-0121? Motion by Councilman Sunday? Seconded by Councilman Gaines. Any proponents or opponents? Welcome. Great food.
Thank you. Daryl Ald, 11437 South 120th Papillion. Proponent, owner, just getting a little patio off to the side to try and capture some of the nice weather.
As long as we've got a little bit of time, we're at the end of the agenda, and you waited this long.
I did. It was very interesting.
Since Pine and Black is a little new, and we've got people asking, can you give a little bit of a commercial?
A little bit of a commercial. It's in Midland's Place, 84th and 370, corner space. Used to be an Asian restaurant that had a dumpster to the side. We moved the dumpster, that's where we've got the patio going. Originally, I'm from Seattle, so we kind of specialize in seafood, farm-to-table, wines, steaks, chicken, good food, good-for-you, all-natural, no additives, preservatives, healthy portions. So we hope you all come. I know we've seen a few of you up there.
That's very good. Appreciate you bringing it to Papillion.
Thank you.
Any other, any opponents? Council discussion?
I just want to say, I'm sorry you had to sit through that. Thank you.
Please vote.
Six gays, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F4, Resolution R 23-0123. Treating this kind of like we have with fireworks and garbage truck licenses, where we have multiple items, we have them all in one motion, but if a council... multiple items, we have them all in one motion, but if a council member for any reason wants to treat them separately, we absolutely can do that, just let me know, and we won't require a motion or second, we're trying to handle it kind of like consent, but absent that, is it's a resolution to approve the appointments of Brian Akert, Michael Tiedemann, James Rabic, Ethan Brown, and Bob Lapke to the Board of Appeals for staggered terms beginning July 5th, July 2023. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R-23-0123?
No.
Motion by Councilman Sunday?
No.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents or opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Six yes, zero nays.
And just for the public, that's for the new property maintenance code, we'd had a lot of discussion about due process, and that's an appeals board in that process, so appreciate that. Committee reports, I believe, Public Works met, I don't know if there's a quorum, but we can still maybe get a report if you want to. No, 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 no feedback, okay. Any comments from the floor? See none? Comments from council? Just last couple of weeks, want to thank everybody, I think almost the full council was there, a lot of staff was there, a lot of public was there, the funeral for Lieutenant Ray Higgins, thank you for all of the support, and again, condolences to his family and to the police department, amazing the public support for that. We had an MFO meeting, that's the one, that's the combined board over the fire department, and so, the combined board for the fire department met. The major thing there was reviewing next year's budget, no major items came out of that, and you'll start getting feedback in our one-on-one sessions about the fire budget. Everything's in line there. Speaking of the budget, have started, the general draft of it is together, and so, we're starting the council one-on-one meetings this week and next week. I think all of those have been scheduled. If you don't have one on your calendar, let us know, and we'll make sure we get that on the calendar, and then, once we do all eight of the one-on-ones, well, if there's any common themes or any changes that come out, we'll finalize the proposed budget, and then, probably about August 5th or 6th, we'll get the line, add the formal line item budget out to you, and that'll be a week before it's introduced to the public, so you have time to work with it, and then, it's got to go through the whole three series of first reading, second, and third, so you'll have the budget, the full budget in your hands almost six to eight weeks before there's a final vote, so if there's any amendments that need to be made. We don't have the certified values from the state yet, so some of it's still a little preliminary, but that'll come out during that process, so if you don't have your meeting scheduled, let us know, but appreciate your time on that. Then there was a ribbon cutting today, speaking of the restaurants on the border, opened up in Papillion in the old Pizza Ranch over on 72nd. While on the border is a chain, it is actually local ownership, so it's local owners that have that and invested in Papillion, so appreciate that. Couple other things for the schedule, August 5th and 6th, maybe put on your calendar, Omaha By Design, which is kind of a metro-wide group on design of buildings and architecture, is having an event called Open Omaha Event, and they try to find projects in the metro to highlight, they're kind of unique that people care about, and Papillion City Hall is on their tour for the remodel project, so August 5th and 6th, 10 to 5, if you're interested, it's tying that to the 100th anniversary, so that was nice to have that highlighted, and then, just another reminder, this Friday at 10:00 a.m. at the Papillion Landing Softball Complex, renaming of the streets for Peaches James and Jordy Ball, and Husker softball coach, Ravell, has actually changed some flight schedules so she could be here as well, so we'll have her give a little bit of a keynote, so it should be a really good event, so appreciate anybody that can come out for that. Any other council discussion? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No.
Motion by Councilman Glover?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines, please vote.
Six yes, zero nays.
We are adjourned.